Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Work Session for April 13th. First up on our agenda today is, we had a discussion that was tabled from our last meeting on the disposition of real property. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just turn it over to Denny and Nan.
So, I'd like to add a few comments to supplement the information provided on Monday evening. So, since that time, we worked with Brett Rowlett, who's the Director of Government Relations at LCC, and John Stark, who's here today, he's the KLCC Station Manager, to look into the transmission issue with KLCC, and Denny spent some time up on the roof getting more details. I understand the view was really good.
It was great.
But this is a real issue, and we will need to find a solution. I understand that Granite Properties has also talked with KLCC about different technical options that have some possibilities. And we also met with Jody Moyens and Juliana from the Starlight to make sure that they know the details about this proposed transaction and the project, and to hear of any of their concerns. They raised several issues, specifically the commercial traffic flow and the location of the trash containers. We let them know that we will work with them to maintain the use of their patio and the service areas they need for parking and trash collection, and they stated that they recognize the need for additional housing and are generally in support of this project. Third, we were able to provide additional sales comparisons, which was a question from Monday. Granite Properties is proposing $35 a square foot, which we compared to $32.50 from the shed. Actually, the alley for Whole Foods was at $36 a square foot. The property that we sold to Northwest Community Credit Union was under 20, and the two recent appraisals for the E-Web property closest to downtown came in, one at 25 and one at 35. Capstone was at $31 a square foot. A little property that we vacated next to Eugene Hotel was at $30 a square foot. So, we felt that the $35 was in the ballpark and actually a little bit at the higher end. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
So, I have one before I take questions from around the table. So, when was public notice given of the sale of this, of the possible sale of this property, or the desire to acquire it?
So, Catherine, maybe you want to step in? I'll give a short answer, and then you can supplement. Public notice was not required relative to the sale of this property. But as a courtesy, we just contacted the neighbors, and we had questions given to us, and then we responded, and then tried to hold a broader conversation.
So, just to clarify, there is no legal requirement?
Correct.
Okay, so, we'll start out with Counselor Clark.
And George Brown.
I want to follow up on that a little bit. Under what, it seem, only just because it seems odd, it seems counterintuitive. I don't, I'm not an attorney, and I try, try not to play one on TV, but maybe you can help me understand, under what provision of state law or our ordinance doesn't require us to give notice if we are going, if we intend to consider an opportunity to sell public property?
Well, and Nan worked with Anne Davies in our office around those specific questions, but I can say there's, really, the way I can answer that is in the opposite, in which is, there is no requirement that there be public notice, or, so it's not, you're going to find something that says you don't have to provide notice.
Right.
It's that there is no requirement to provide the notice. Because what the, I mean, what you, what the agency would be, oh, and what, and I'm sorry, it just now occurred to me, did we open up the meeting?
No, we didn't.
Oh, Urban Renewal District.
Yes.
So, we're going to close this City Council meeting and open Urban Renewal District. Thank you.
Thank you. It occurred to me as I was talking.
Well done.
Restart.
Good thing we questioned a little.
The, what the Urban Renewal Agency would be voting on today is authorization, is directing the city manager to give him, the director, the authority to sell this piece of property. So, the vote today doesn't actually sell the property, it gives them the authority. But there is nothing, when it comes to the sale of the agency's property, there is no requirement that public notice be put out, that we, that you request other people that would be interested in this piece of property. Those requirements just aren't there.
There's no administrative policy language around that of any kind?
For the city itself?
Yes.
No. So, if you go to the Property Disposition Code provisions, there is no requirement that public notice be sent out soliciting. Now, as an agency, or as, when you're sitting as the City Council, you could say, "City Manager, we ask that you go out and solicit other offers." That could be a part of the direction.
I would say that I'm perfectly willing to consider this in the form presented and under the circumstances presented, and by the way, great job on the follow-up of information. Really appreciate that. But I would say, I think, that maybe we need that. I think maybe we need at least a structured policy around the idea of where, if we're going to sell public property, we should have at least some manner of notification process, some matter of publicly announcing our intent, and being, I mean, I think that we owe the public that level of transparency, and it's no one's fault, it's just that it's never been done that way. I think that we could probably earn a little bit of goodwill in the community if we were to create such a policy that says, you know, "Let's, let's do this in the, in a very open and transparent sort of way." So, perhaps I'll put out a work session poll or something like it.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. What about, does this non-rerequirement just apply to Urban Renewal Agency property, or does it apply to all city-owned property, non-negotiables?
The, oh, the, the lack of requirement for public, yeah. I mean, that's generally, it's...
Yeah, we, I have to agree with Counselor Clark on this. I think we should change that, and I'm, I'm not worried about, I'm not talking about this project here. I think, I think things look okay here, but I'm just thinking about, just to take an example, the most recent example was selling the parking lot to the shed, city-owned parking lot to the shed. There was no public notice that that property was for sale. There wasn't even a "for sale" sign there. Nobody knew. It was like, the first person that came along and wanted to buy it was the one that got it. We could perhaps got a better deal from somebody else, had it been public notice, and the people could have bid on it. And actually, I think it was kind of acquired under false pretenses. That was where they were supposed to build a new, you know, performance spaces and all this stuff. Well, I don't think that's going to happen. They sold their parking lot to the Justina Group for Whole Foods, their parking lot down across the street, and so they're using that parking lot as a parking lot for their patrons and their students and instructors. So, yeah, I mean, we can't do it today, obviously, but I think we ought to, we ought to have a, something in the code that requires public, public notice and public bid, at least a sign on the property that it's for sale. We didn't even have that. Okay. So, as, could you just go over the KLCC part that you, that you mentioned, just one more time?
Actually, you could, because you were there.
Maybe the person on the roof should address that. So, yeah, I went up there with them. There's, there's basically two things. There's a, an antenna, for lack of a better word, and then there's a disc that they have up on the roof that basically shoots to a tower up on the Butte, you know, the two hours, the two towers on the Butte, yes. And they need a direct path, and if you build a building, a five-story building, their direct path to those towers gets obstructed. There's some technical ways to solve that. You could move it, for example. We've had some discussions about putting it on top of the new housing project, that where you have a direct path. You could relay, you could put another tower somewhere else where you could go here and then kind of go around the building. All of those have a cost, and our desire would be that, that KLCC be held harmless in that equation. I think that's the outcome we're looking for. No disruption of service, no extra costs that they would absorb, and I think we would be committed to work with it. It's kind of a technical solution. It could be expensive, but we don't know all the details, but I think our commitment would be, and I think something that we could consider as a deal point, is to have KLCC held harmless in that equation.
Yeah, well, I think that's key. It's, it's a wonderful public service that they provide, and to have that cut off with no remedy would be, would generate a lot of frustration and anger, I think, and it would be the loss of a really great service to most of the town. So, yeah, I mean, the rest of the, now, I'd just like to go over one more thing. So, the sale, now we're just talking about half of that property for Granite. And as the owner of the Rogue property, or I mean, the Starlight, have they expressed any interest in buying the other half, or will they continue to, do they lease that from Urban Renewal Agency?
They don't lease it from us. They have a revocable permit to use it for the back, but they're, but they're not leasing it, and they don't have an easement. There hasn't been discussion from Dee Hillbury, the owner of that property, to purchase it, but I've let him know that if he wanted to come forward, he could. In the meeting this morning with the tenants, with the two women from the Starlight, we talked about the logistics of that. We would certainly still want to leave emergency egress for KLCC and for the third building. So, again, we want to have a project go forward that does not impede the other uses on the site.
Yeah, I think the second entrance back there in the alleyway is, is like, you have to have it in case, you know, the fire or something. Yeah, I mean, I think it looks okay. I, and the, it looks like Rogue will have plenty of room for their recycling bin and their dumpster, right, outside of that footprint.
Actually, the code requires, because this is a new building, that their dumpster and their recycling, whatever, all those materials be included within the footprint of the building.
Right, okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, George Poling is next, and Betty Taylor after.
Thank you. Yeah, in reference to Mike's comments about public notice, you know, I think if the city is offering the property for sale, yes, or the Urban Renewal Agency, yes, I think it's definite that we need to send it out. But I would like to hear a little more, maybe at this next work session, about properties owned by the Urban Renewal, that we have no idea somebody's out there is interested in it, and they contact us, inquire about selling the property. Is there, I guess, I'm still a little concerned if there is a definite need to send out public notice on that or not, but like I said, that, if we do have a work session on that, we can kind of have that discussion later. It's just something that, that I was thinking about. And then, Denny, did I understand you that the ultimate goal for the Urban Renewal Agency/City of Eugene is to hold KLCC harmless of any cost in keeping their operation going? Is that...
Yeah, I think the, it's the cost of potentially having to relocate that infrastructure to another point where they can maintain their reception. So, I guess, again, it's something Council could consider as a deal point, and it's, I don't think it's in the current outline of terms, but it would be something that you might want to consider putting in the deal points if you have interest in holding KLCC harmless in this.
And have you had any discussion with the buyers about the KLCC potential cost to them?
We haven't gotten into the cost amounts. We had an early conversation with KLCC, with Brett Rowlett from LCC, but it was not anything that we could count on. We're not into the technical details yet. But we have had conversation, and I know that Granite Properties has had conversation with KLCC to look for a solution. I think everybody agrees there needs to be a solution.
Well, again, I've got a concern about setting a precedence on this. If this project were to move forward without us selling the property, who's going to hold KLCC harmless in that case? If we do it in this, this instance, if we sell the, the property and agree to finance part or all of KLCC's cost, what's going to happen the next time a project comes up and a neighboring or a nearby property is affected by whatever is developed? I'm a little concerned about setting a precedence on this, so I'm not, I'm not sold on that just yet. But I do agree that KLCC should, in fact, be assisted some way, but I'm not so sold on it that, that we get involved in that part of it.
Before I call in, Betty, my thinking about this, in some ways, has to do with a larger discussion of Council goals and aims. So, in terms of the whole project, the reason that you might decide to support it is not really based on the best fiscal deal you can get. It's really based on a broader notion of what we want to have happen in our downtown area. And when we lift something to the status of saying, "That's important enough that we're willing to take, to put some extra things behind it," which this Council majority has said that they want more housing downtown, and this Council majority has said that they're interested in developing workforce housing, and in this case, you have a project before you that depends on access to a piece of land owned by the city to make it happen, which is a special circumstance, and it meets the goals that Council majority has identified as what they want to do and put their energy behind. And so, the expectation of the people who are developing is, is that you mean it. Their expectation is that you are looking for good housing and something to move this workforce housing agenda. And so, they've gone to a lot of trouble to try to come up with a proposal that is in line with what Council has said they are interested in and want to happen. And if you think in that context, and maybe we need some language around those circumstances when we look at, because we've got, we've got a lot more urbanization coming, I think, and we need to be prepared for things that we're willing to invest in to make it happen, as opposed to it's just somebody's idea and we really don't care about it, right? So, there's a, there's a difference of, of circumstances here that we need to own up to and identify and treat differently than we would treat other circumstances, based on what the Council majority has said they want to accomplish. So, that's how I look at this, and I think that is, lifts it into a different place, and which, who's going to bring forth the thing that will give us the best bang for our buck, which might not be the same thing as giving us the achievement of goals that we've said the Council majority wants to achieve. So, I just want to put that out there. Okay, Betty, you're up.
Before you let the majority speak, you did a sales job. So, they're doing it all for us, it sounds like. They thought, "What can we do for our city?" and they decided to do this. I think, if we're talking about values, keeping LCC operating without interference is a higher value than any housing. But back to, aside from that, the principle of the thing is, to me, whether it's required or not, if we're selling property, everyone should have a chance to bid on it. It doesn't mean we'd have to sell it to them, but other people should have a chance to. We've done this before. I don't approve. I think if we're, if it's public property, then anybody in the public should get enough notice and a chance to buy it if they want to. Maybe they don't want to. And I'm also, as you know, opposed to the tax exemption, which is, they said they won't do it anyway unless we have the tax exemption, so I don't think they're trying to do us a favor. If they don't build something there, probably someone else will sometime. Thank you.
Alan, you're up next.
Thank you for the sale price comparisons. So, $35 per square foot seems reasonable. Are there other circumstances, other than the one that we're in, where Urban Renewal District or city properties, there is a notice requirement? Or is it just a blanket, we don't have, we don't have one?
When, to sell it, if we wanted to? Not that I can think of. I mean, because it's, here, you know, you have the unique situation that because of the size of this particular piece of property, it really has no use to anyone besides the neighboring property owner, where if you had, if it did have some independent relevance, let's say you could build something independently on it, would that then make it have a public notice part to it? And it, not that I'm aware of, no.
Yeah, I think that one exception is if it's right-of-way. So, if we're vacating an alley and selling that, then there's notice provisions, but this is not right-of-way. This is actually a parcel that the Urban Renewal Agency owns.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I agree that there should be some kind of notice provision for when we do that, or at least a public notice of it. Not necessarily that there's a bidding process, but a public notice at least. The, so, can you, who talked to Starlight and SCS Investments?
I did.
Okay, and they're both okay with this?
With my colleague Will Dowdy.
And secondarily, SCS Investments, they're abutting the same piece of property as Starlight, and what's their interest in that property? Do they have any access permits or anything like that through that, or is...
They don't. Their concerns were very similar, which is truck access and delivery access. They also had more generalized concerns about some of the activity going on in that service court and in the alley, and some of it related to people that work in the area, some of that related to people that don't work in that area. But they were really looking at, are they going, are, will we maintain the use of the alley itself? And the answer is yes. And will they have the same access to the back of their property? And the answer was yes.
So, yesterday, the owners of Starlight came here and said that they hadn't heard about it. And just as a side note, there's a difference between trying to communicate and communicating. Trying to communicate says you send a message out, but if they never got it or never heard it, that's not communication. That's just an attempt. So, something to keep in mind for future. But, so, Starlight, you talked to them, and they're okay with this?
They're in support of it. We had a good conversation outside, in the, outside of the property, and then we moved into their property, and they pointed out some of the logistical issues, and I think there are easy logistical solutions. In other words, when a truck backs up, if there's delivery, where do they actually go? How will this change? As it turns out, the alley in this case is extra wide. Typically, our alleys are only 14 feet, but here, we have a 22-foot alley, which means potentially somebody could be, making a delivery and still not block the alley. And they stated that they were in support of more housing for downtown.
Okay. So, this is, so the alley would be just normal alley access, like other buildings that went all the way up to the alley, so there's no issues regarding all of that access and stuff like that. I agree that KLCC should be held harmless. Is there any cost issue around, do we have any cost estimate? I'm sorry?
Very preliminary at this point, but it could be in the $40,000 to $50,000 range, so it's not insignificant. Another thing that we mentioned and talked about, creative solutions. There might be a fiber application. We're bringing, hopefully bringing, we'll talk about that next, the fiber project. And, you know, there might be some opportunity to update technology based on fiber going to the building. So, I think, really, what we're looking for, and I think this is what the mayor was alluding to, is I think there's an opportunity for a creative solution, and I think that would be a sidebar we would put on the deal, in that, so if Council wants to advance the housing project and wants to protect KLCC's transmission, I think we can creatively find a way to do that. How we do it, I think it's going to take a little bit of work, because it's technical, and I can't solve that today, but I think we could get there.
Okay. And, and as part of the redevelopment proposal, Granite is saying, "Without a MPT, they won't proceed," correct? So, they need a grant of MPT. So, in this case, there's two very distinct differences, I think, between regular property sales and mitigation associated with the property sale and redevelopment. One is that, if not for the MPT, this would not occur, so we are facilitating it. So, it becomes incumbent upon us to cater for the mitigation, but not always, in my mind, depends on, not necessarily mitigating for private interest, but in this case, it's a public interest. KLCC is a public institution, and, and to me, that's a significant difference, that merits are getting involved. Just wanted also say that, since this is a MPT requirement, the sale's contingent upon that deal going through. So, if it doesn't happen, then the, the sale doesn't go through and it reverts back to the Urban Renewal District. I just wanted to say, I'm undecided on the MPT, because we haven't seen it, and how it involves the new rules. This will be the first one going through the new rules. So, if I were to allow this to go forward, then it doesn't necessarily mean that I'm in support of a MPT.
So, our second round is going to start, and I...
Oh, Mayor, can I get in the queue?
Oh, sure. Why don't you go now?
Yeah, so, Alan may have asked one of my questions, which was, "If we sell this parcel, is that a guarantee that the project will be built?"
No. They have, they have to go through the MPT process.
And if it's not, then what happens to this potential transaction?
There are actually several things that have to happen for this project to go forward. If the Urban Renewal Agency agrees to sell the parcel, but either the MPT is not approved by City Council, or, for a number of reasons, the project cannot go forward, or maybe doesn't go forward in as timely a fashion as we would expect, either the property won't be sold, it won't close, or we would have the opportunity to buy the property back.
Okay. And the project will need to work with the adjacent properties, as, as other councils have discussed, to mitigate negative impacts, like the KLCC transmission concern and the solar impact on the outdoor seating of the Starlight Lounge. In staff's opinion, does the MPT program, as we've revised it, require them to provide some enhancements to assist with that kind of mitigation? And I apologize if you've already addressed this. Sometimes it's challenging for me to hear staff talking today on the phone.
Yeah, I think it, I wouldn't say it's a requirement, but part of the, the new process is a lot more interactive with the neighborhood, so it gives multiple opportunities for the neighborhood to interact with the project and provide input that eventually goes to Council. So, for example, if the KLCC would have, issue would have come up in that review process, Council would have been aware of it, we would have been aware of it, and hopefully, we'd find a way to mitigate it before the MPT got approved. So, it doesn't require it, but there's a review panel, Council reviews those, the neighborhood is, is engaged in the process. So, feels like there's plenty of opportunity for these issues to come forward, and there's hopefully an opportunity for us to solve for them during the process before the MPT's approved.
And I'll answer specifically related to the solar issue. It's not required by code, because this is a commercially zoned property downtown, but in conversations with the Starlight owners, that was not a concern. They understood that, they understood any building going up there would have the same issue, and their hours are 4:00 PM till 2:00 AM, and so they weren't as concerned about the solar issue.
Okay. Well, I support the sale of this parcel. I think it's just one small step in moving forward what looks to be a good project for downtown. You know, like Counselor Zelenka, I reserve my opinion on whether or not to approve a MPT for it. It's way too early to know if that's going to work out, but regardless of what happens with this particular project, we need to be prepared to work with any downtown developer to ensure, whether or not they get a MPT, I think, to ensure that the impacts on other established businesses are limited, because we know when new buildings come online downtown, that there will be some negative impacts to other businesses. They might be temporary, but we need to be active partners as a city in working to limit those, so we don't lose the good things we already have downtown in order to gain other good things in the area.
Thank you, Claire. So, I've got everybody back in the queue for the second round. I'm aiming at ending this conversation in 15 minutes and putting motion forward.
Good.
So, let's all try to do that. And I want to make a brief comment that I did not mean to infer that I think the, any business is doing it for the benefit of the community per se, that they are doing it, offering a proposal that they hope will be profitable to them, but doing it in a way that is in compliance with what we say that we want. That's my, my view. And, and I certainly appreciate the conversation about the need for a policy around notice. I think that's a very, very good suggestion. So, Mike, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Beth, will you put out that poll, please, to talk about, from, from me asking for us to have a work session on the, both the idea of appropriate notice and a policy for sales of city-owned properties, okay? I appreciate the mayor's comments. I agree, reminds me of years ago, when I used to be in, in media sales and in sales training, they would tell you that you have to answer an objection and you have to accommodate a condition. And I think that that's kind of a, at least a little parallel to the situation here, where I, I want to have that work session, because what I want us to get away from is that even the remotest possibility, that those who watch our work, and when we sell a pub...
the remotest possibility that those who watch our work, and when we sell a public thing, could use the words sweetheart deal, which have been done in a couple of places and a couple of times. And I think maybe largely because we don't have a guiding principle or a guiding policy around that pre-existing. And I think that'll make it easier for people to understand what the process is and what to expect, and that's good. I also think it values the, the, the public's interest, the citizens' interest, and that that public thing that they own gets the highest and best reward when we consider doing such a thing, much like when we buy things, we have to make sure that the public's getting the very best value. I think that's, that's our, most incumbent upon us. Number two, I would say that I, again, I'm not, I'm no attorney, but I would think that, based on the fact that KLCC gets their license from a federal agency, I would think that there are some civil issues or potentially rights involved in the idea of a clear transmission, since their license comes from a federal. I mean, I would think there's, there, those rights could be at question when it comes to someone blocking their federally permitted capacity. So I absolutely want to make sure that they have the ability to continue. And Denny stole my thunder with the fiber. That's what I was gonna recommend, but also, I think it actually ought to be incumbent on those who are coming to us proposing it to mitigate the KLCC's issue, rather than the city's. But that's just my opinion. I also want to say that I, I'll save that for the other work session if we have it. Thank you.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. When will we, we're calling the KLCC mitigation, it's gonna be a deal point. When will we, will the agency board be involved in directing the manager with suggested deal points?
The deal points that we've proposed so far are included in the item, in the AIS that came to you today. So this would be an added deal point that you'd be free to make at this time.
Okay. All right. Yeah, and it's my understanding is the FCC will be involved in this, because to change, my understanding is that anytime you change an existing tower arrangement, it has to have FCC approval, so, which I'm sure it would get. I don't think it'd be a problem, but they, they have to be involved in the process, I believe. And I'm curious what other odd parcels that maybe the Urban Renewal Agency owns in downtown. You know, I don't have to see a complete list now, but I would be curious for, the Riverfront District, no. That's, I know perfectly fine with those boundaries. And I know the boundaries of the downtown Urban Renewal District. I just don't know what, how much property the agency still owns in downtown. Maybe we could review that. And, you know, the MPT application, the MPT approval is key for this project, but I don't think that we have a very good, the administrative rules, I think, need to be amended before we start granting MPTs. The way they read now is, they define workforce housing as 100% of the area median income. And, I mean, I sent everyone a memo about this. There's over 500, it's about 503 jurisdictions in the United States that have workforce housing programs, and nobody, not one of them, defines workforce housing as 100% of the AMI. And furthermore, only one other agency grants jurisdiction, grants 10-year property tax exemptions, and that's not for workforce housing even. That's, that's for below 60% of the AMI, and that's Portland. We're the only two cities that I know of that grant 10-year property tax exemptions. There may be others, but I haven't run into them yet in my research, so we will have to. I think we need to amend that. I don't know exactly how that's gonna happen, but my recollection was, once we did that, we were going to have another meeting and determine what the, what we actually mean by workforce housing. Council never really discussed that. I think we were in such a rush to finish it with all the other amendments to the old MPT policy, that we left that out, and that is key to the whole thing, because it is, after all, a policy to create housing and workforce housing. And the way it stands now is, is, I think it's terribly flawed, and we'll have to have a session, a work session to revise that, I believe. Thank you.
George Polley's next, but I did want to say to that, that I have asked the manager to bring back for us all the motions and agreements and discussion points that we went through when we were talking about that issue. So, do that.
Workforce housing issue?
Yes. Okay, George Polley?
Okay, thank you. Let me just state right up front, I'm, I'm in favor of moving this forward, the sale of this property forward, like Alan and everybody else around the table, most everybody else around the table. I'm not ready to make a decision on the MPT, because I want to hold the project up side by side, but with the new MPT rules. I may or may not, it depends on how that looks. And I'm also in favor of holding KLCC's operations harmless. I have some questions about the financing of it. You know, whether or not we can work with the buyer of the property together, or work out some kind of arrangement, that, you know, that's, I'd like to hear about that. The proceeds from the sale of the property will go into the downtown revitalization loan program, which, in your AIS, Denny, you said that that's what's been done in the past. Is that a requirement, that that money goes there, or can that money go elsewhere? With it, urban renewal?
It's what we've done historically. I guess I would defer to Sue if there's, where else we might put it, but-
Well, what I'm getting at, real quick, is, is it feasible that that money can be used to help defray some of KLCC's costs, if it's worked out that way with the seller in KLCC and the Urban Renewal Agency?
I would say if it's urban renewal property, it has to be spent on something that's in the plan, and that's not in the plan. So my initial thought would be that we wouldn't be able to do that.
I'm sorry?
We would not be able to use the money for that purpose. That would be my initial thought.
You know, one idea, though, is that you could, because the money is going into the loan program, you could find some lending mechanism that could help advance this project. And I don't know exactly how that would happen today, but there's some ways that you could, and we've done that a lot with financing, creatively interjected financing to projects to make them move forward, and that's an option. I'm not saying it's the only option, but that is an option.
Thank you.
Betty?
Thank you. I just want some clarifications on a couple of things. But the urban, that matter that just came up, though, if the Urban Renewal District ends, would that make a difference in where the money goes?
I think the answer, and Sue could correct me if I'm wrong, is that there's tax increment and there's non-tax increment, and the proceeds are non-tax increment. So those funds could stay in the loan program, and the loan program could survive beyond the sunset of the district, and the tax increment dollars would go back to the taxing districts if the district sunsets.
Thank you. And the questions I had, and I won't take the full three minutes, which is, will be a minority position also, but you said you talked to Starlight. Was that the owners of the property who are okay with it are the owners of the business?
I've had multiple emails going back and forth with the broker representing the owner, and I've met in person with the owners of the business.
Yes, but I, I thought I heard you say that the owners had considered buying the property.
The owners of the Starlight-
The property.
Have not, the owners of the business-
Not the business, the property.
I'm sorry. The owners of the Starlight building have, we talked, I mentioned that possibility, because that would be, I said they could come with a proposal, but they have not asked about any process for the owner of the building where the Starlight is in to buy the property behind.
I'm thinking if there were more time, perhaps they would. We don't know that they wouldn't if there were, if there was time. Then my other clarification, I wanted you said, that the city would have the opportunity to buy the land back if the project doesn't go forward. Do we also have the obligation to buy it back?
No.
No.
We generally would want to have the option, but there might be cases where we don't want to buy it back, because maybe it's a liability, because there's expenses associated with it.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
I'm gonna turn to Alan, and then after he's through making his comments, he'll put the motion out. But I did want to say, because nobody's brought it up, and I think it's really in the public's interest to remember this, that part of the new MPT is that committee that is composed of a lot of different stakeholders. And a very important role that has to happen is they look at, from all those different perspectives, whether this MPT proposal that will come forward meets the goals we have as a, that the council has put in place. So you have a public body that is going to be, and get their first chance to eyeball a MPT proposal from all those different perspectives, that everyone came to us, from labor, from environment, from all different places, to say they wanted to be part of looking at a MPT proposal. So we will have that happen for the, for the first time. It's gonna be very interesting, but I do want the public to know that that's a whole new, significant piece of public eyeballing of MPT proposals. Okay, Alan?
Yeah, I was gonna make, actually, the same comment, that there is a whole new group looking at these things and making recommendations to us. And I think there's a baker's dozen, 13 changes that we made to the program, which make it substantially different than it was before. And there is also a public interest aspect to MPT, so any, I think that's a giant ability for us to be able to say, in the public interest, we therefore require KLCC to be, for instance, because they're a public agency, to be held harmless. That could be a requirement that we get attached to the, to the MPT, being in the public interest to do that. With that, I'll put out the motion. I move to authorize the agency director to sell the south half of tax lot 170331134200 to Granite Properties, consistent with the terms included in attachment B of the AIS.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four. Claire?
I vote yes.
Five in favor. What, in opposition, one. It passes. Thank you all very much. Okay.
Two minutes there.
Okay. Okay. So now we're on to item number two.
Mayor, if you could close the-
Oh, yeah, I do. Thank you. I'm gonna close the Urban Renewal District and open the city council. All right. So there we go. We're gonna be talking about high-speed fiber.
So I'll get us started. At the last work session on downtown improvements, council provided direction to begin steps required to amend the downtown urban renewal plan, but at the same time, asked us to come back for individual work sessions on each of the four potential downtown improvement projects that were identified by council, and the purpose being discussion of alternative funding options in more detail. Today, we're gonna focus on the downtown fiber project. There'll be future work sessions on the farmer's market, parks, blocks, and open space, and the old LCC building, which are the other projects. At the last work session, we recommended urban renewal as a funding strategy to be included in this package of downtown improvement projects. And we've been working under the assumption, and we believe the direction we've received to date from council indicates, that council has an interest in moving forward with some version of all four of those projects. So although we're here to talk today specifically about the fiber project, we're also trying to keep our eye on the bigger picture, which is how do we make progress on all four of these downtown improvement projects? So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Ann.
Hi. I want to start with a quick summary of what the purpose of the downtown fiber project is. There's limited telecommunications infrastructure in Eugene. There's a lack of competition, leading to lower service speeds and higher prices than is seen in larger markets. This is typical of mid-sized and smaller communities. Major metropolitan areas are more likely to have many private providers, simply because they are larger markets. The limited telecommunications infrastructure has become a factor that's limiting the economic prosperity of our community. The lower service speeds and the higher prices make it difficult for firms that depend on internet communications to thrive. Quality internet access has become essential infrastructure. Slow internet speeds are the 21st century equivalent of not having freeway access in the 20th century, or not having a railroad stop in the 19th century. More and more goods and services are being transported electronically, and the absence of quality telecommunications infrastructure will limit our economic prosperity. Firms that transfer large amounts of data will be unlikely to stay and grow here. There's many potential paths to expand our infrastructure. For example, Council Brown sent us an email last week, asking for information about Google Fiber, asking if that path is a viable option. We had pursued that option. In response to a Google Fiber request for information in 2010, Eugene applied to be a Google Fiber community. We were one of approximately 1,100 communities who responded to that request. Today, there are four Google Fiber networks, and there are 11 upcoming Google Fiber cities, including Portland. They are all large metropolitan areas, and we are not on that list. Municipally-owned networks tend to be in small and mid-sized communities, because those communities are not big enough to bring in the private investment like Google. To identify a viable path to establishing a fiber network, the city partnered with Alcoa and EWEB a couple of years ago to run a pilot project. And through that pilot project, the three agencies have developed a viable path, one that runs fiber optic cables through EWEB's electrical conduit. And that's, oh, it's a little bit bled out. That's a picture of EWEB staff actually installing the microduct into an electric vault. And this is actually a sample, I finally got my hands on a sample of microduct. And so this is what they actually put in the street. The little white tubes in here is what they run the fiber through. This one is a mid-sized piece of microduct, and it holds 12 white tubes. 72 strands of fiber can fit in each one of these tubes. I'll pass that around, just so you can play with it. The pilot project has brought service to three buildings in the downtown, the Broadway Commerce Center, the Woolworth Building, as well as 942 Olive, which is gonna house the Rain Eugene Building. Alcoa has also extended the fiber service to their building at 859 Wool Ammett Street, so private tenants in that building can use the fiber network. And we now have a very small fiber network. The connected buildings are fully leased. Property managers have reported that the fiber draws office tenants to those buildings, especially those in the tech sector. The fiber is helping to attract firms to our downtown, making it a more vibrant commercial center. And we learned a lot from the pilot project, including how to resolve the technical and the market issues, and we use that information to develop a plan to construct a fiber network across the downtown. First thing we did was to identify a plan area. The fiber planning team determined that it would equal the area in the downtown where the utilities have already been undergrounded. This allows us to use the method that was proven in the pilot, where we use that microduct. And we run the fiber through the electrical conduit. We don't need to open any streets, and instead, we run the equipment from electric vault to electric vault. Through our engineering analysis, we found that we couldn't use the electrical conduit around High Street. There's just not enough excess capacity in the electrical conduit. So we narrowed the service area to cover the portion where we won't have to open the streets. We also did not include the EWEB redevelopment area, because we can't estimate costs until there's more precise detail about where those roads will go. We've called this the initial service area, shown in blue on this map. And the network is designed so it can be expanded. You can fit a lot of fiber to grow in through those tubes. We've estimated that the total investment for this initial service area is gonna be about $4 million. It will be a dark fiber network. It was 3.8, but we rounded up to four. It's, it is just the infrastructure that, to create an open access network. It's just the infrastructure. Any private internet service provider can lease the fiber and provide service, including Google Fiber. And they've done that in some communities. They've used the municipalities' infrastructure to provide service on the municipal fiber. The infrastructure is there to create a competitive landscape, so the service improves and prices decrease. The network includes a wholesale backhaul connection to a large internet exchange in Portland. This wholesale connection will lower telecom costs for the downtown network, as well as public agencies, including the school districts and Lane County. Constructing a municipally-owned network will cost the city. It will not be a revenue generator for the city or for EWEB. The lease rates for the fiber strands are designed to cover the cost of maintaining the fiber. This model treats fiber as we treat our roads. They are essential public infrastructure. Because the fiber is not a revenue generator, we have to identify funds for its construction. Because the fiber is not a revenue generator, we have to identify funds for its construction. This map shows how the downtown and riverfront urban renewal districts overlap with the initial service area. The downtown urban renewal district covers roughly half of that initial service area, and our initial calculations show that we could use roughly, urban renewal to cover about $2.5 million of the full $4 million investment. That number will be refined as we move forward with implementation. This is less than the amount that we have included in the amendment for the downtown urban renewal plan. We identified $3 million there. And that's because costs may turn out to be higher than we've estimated, and because the share of urban renewal could be higher than we've estimated. So you've asked us to identify alternative funding sources. This is a matrix where we looked at a variety of funding sources, and how we could take into consideration their financial impact, the amount of dollars it could bring, and the feasibility. The matrix shows the relative impact and the feasibility. The vertical axis shows the impact, the amount of dollars. The horizontal axis shows the relative feasibility. The higher the funding source is on the chart, the more funds associated with it. The further to the right, the more feasible it is. For example, private funds from property owners is a potential source. Our work indicates it's quite feasible, but it can only provide a small amount of funds. A general obligation bond could provide a large amount of funds, but it would require a citywide vote and an increase in taxes, making it less feasible. Staff have identified a mix of funds to cover the $4 million investment, and this chart shows our best-case scenario, where we are successful with key grants. Starting from the bottom of this chart, we've got riverfront urban renewal can cover a small portion. We estimate $200,000. And then we also estimate, the next one up, is private funds from property owners. We are, we've also estimated that to be about $200,000. We're working to develop a system so that property owners have an incentive to contribute to the project. And next up on the list is a federal grant. We've identified a grant from the Economic Development Administration that would cover about $1.25 million. We base that number on feedback that we've gotten from EDA staff. It's a competitive grant, and we don't really know what our chances are that we'll get that grant. The next one up is a half a million dollars from the state of Oregon. Our chances of getting that grant, we think, are very good, but we're not completely certain that we'll get that grant. We don't have it yet. We're working on it. We're working on the applications for both of those grants at this time. And so that leaves $1.85 million that has to be covered on the local side. And because we can't be completely certain that we'd get those grants from the state and the feds, that we are moving, we're planning to work in the absence of those grants. If we get the grants, it's wonderful, but we can't count on them. And so this second chart in the graph shows the amount of funds that we have to, we have to plan to come up with from local funds. We've got the riverfront urban renewal, and we've got the private funds. So this next chart, just to show you how, how we can come up with the funds at the local level, the first one is just including, assuming that we use urban renewal, just to show what that looks like. Starting at the bottom of the chart, we've got the riverfront urban renewal, and then private funds from property owners. The next source is the telecom fund. This fund has about $600,000 that have not been included elsewhere. And then we've got $2.5 million that could be used from urban renewal. And with downtown urban renewal, we would need to fill that last $500,000 gap. And we'll be working closely with the state and the federal granting agencies to obtain those grants, and we'll continue to look for other grant opportunities and funding sources to fill that gap. And for example, we have recently identified a small grant opportunity from HUD that would provide the connection to the three affordable housing units in the service area. It would cover a small bit, but it's better than nothing. If we do receive the grant funds and we use urban renewal, we may have the ability to extend the network beyond that initial fiber service area. This second bar in the chart shows a funding mix that is, if we choose to not use urban renewal. We still have riverfront urban renewal, private funds, and the telecom fund. The most feasible way to pay for the rest of that is to fill the gap with a tax revenue that would be redirected from the Urban Renewal Agency to the general fund. Back to you.
So we've included in the packet a summary of the various financial sources that we consider to be available for the fiber project, and a summary of the various tools that we've used to redevelop downtown over the past few years, which was a question that came up at the last work session. We've looked at these, and we, and the recommendation that was put forward at the last work session included, which included urban rule, really was a technical analytical recommendation based on some considerations that we used in our analysis, such as the impact on the taxpayers, the impact on the overlapping taxing districts, timeliness, amount of financial resource available, how long we can go into debt for that source, and impact on other city services. When you look at it from that lens, urban rule is a viable option for accomplishing this package of projects, again, assuming we really are talking about a package of downtown improvement projects. Basically, because it's a tool that has a lot of depth, and it is flexible, council gets to decide how to use those funds. For example, between the library and LCC, and we've talked about this in the past, there's over $30 million in urban renewal funds, and that just kind of indicates what kind of financial capacity urban rule has to deliver projects downtown, if desired. But there's some alternative paths. There's definitely some other ways that we could move forward. Some of those might not have the capacity to fund all of the projects. They might have different impacts on taxpayers or taxing districts like 4J. They may require us to go into debt for longer periods of time. They may compete with other services. They might require a vote. They may even compete with other things on the ballot. There are a lot of other considerations. Ann has mentioned the new general fund that would come in. That is a source of funding for the fiber project, but it may be the only project that you fund over the next few years, and you might not have a resource to accomplish some of the other downtown improvement projects that we're talking about. So there are many considerations when you throw all of these projects and all of the funding sources together, and council may even want to look at this issue through a different lens or a different filter than we've looked at it. So ultimately, I think we need direction on, you know, not only what projects we move forward with, but what's the scope and scale of those projects, and which combination of funding tools that we would move to, use to move these downtown improvement projects forward. In the case of fiber, we believe it's a very high priority for all the reasons that Ann alluded to. The city, EWEB, Alcoa, and the Technology Association of Oregon have put together really a tremendous effort, and we believe we have a really solid plan for implementing the project. And our hope ultimately is to actually begin this project this summer, if at all possible, so.
Danny, when do you need to have council give you those directions? I don't see any motions.
This was an information session. Council asked for further discussion on funding strategies for each one of these projects individually. So again, we're going to come back to provide information. Ultimately, as we've outlined, the decision point really regarding urban renewal needs to occur in June in order to meet the timelines for, you know, sunsetting the district or not sunsetting the district. So we're really leading up to a decision in June, is the way it's laid out now.
Thank you for that. All right, discussion, questions? I've got George Brown, I've got Mike Clark, and I had Mike first, so Mike gets to go first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the wonderful presentation. Good, done. Good job. Well done. I'm going to ask some questions. Usually, it's dangerous to do this, where I don't have at least some idea of where that information is already, but I'm going to see what happens. What's average rent for office space per square foot in downtown Eugene? What is it, about a buck ten, something like that?
Well, you know, downtown has a combination of Class A, B, and C offices, and those vary. So I would say between a dollar and $2, roughly.
Okay. How about downtown Portland?
It's probably closer to three. There's a much greater discrepancy in housing rents between Eugene and Portland, much higher in Portland than Eugene, than commercial rents, but there's still quite a delta between commercial, and it's probably a dollar a square foot, roughly.
One of the important pieces of this conversation is the pilot project that goes to three buildings downtown, only has 1 gig upper limit speed, where this has a much greater capacity if we attach to the mid-mile, right?
It offers us that ability to expand it in the future.
Okay.
The middle mile connection, that backhaul connection to the major Internet exchange, what it does is, it allows us to buy, in bulk--
Right.
--that backhaul connection. It doesn't necessarily bring 10 gig fiber to every business.
Okay. Of the, what, half a dozen cities our size, you mentioned that have already done this in their downtowns at least? Are you, I was told a dozen, maybe, that have this kind of capacity in their downtown core. Is that still the case? Relatively close to our size or in the country?
Yeah. I actually don't know how many cities there are. Every, there's a, a number of cities are doing it where they are the Internet service provider. That's what Sandy has done in some other communities. And where we're just providing the infrastructure is how, the most recent one that pops to mind is Huntsville.
I'm talking about with the expanded capacity, with the mid-mile piece as well.
That, I can't answer that question. I'm not sure.
Okay. Because the, my understanding was, with the kind of speeds that are at least possible with that connection and that capacity, with a kind of amount of data that's possible to move, we would be one of very few communities in the country with those capacities.
One of the primary benefits it brings is direct peering with the major cloud providers, and so it's essentially being right in the same building as, with the Amazon cloud services and the Microsoft cloud services.
So again, that would put us in company with very few communities in the country?
It would, it would be tremendous.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that is, obviously, we may not know the amount of rent that people get for office space in some of those other very few communities, but one might guess that it's a great deal higher, much like it is in Portland with other utilities. Do I have that correct?
Yeah, I think there's a, yes, absolutely. I think there's a good case in study right now, right here in downtown Eugene, the professional building--
Right.
--which has been purchased and being redeveloped as tech office space. And so clearly, the owners have come forward and say, we are marking this building as having, you know, high-speed, high-capacity fiber. And it is attracting a different form of tenant. There are tech companies that are seeking that out. So it does create opportunities, and it's not just about the rents. It's about attracting companies that have good jobs and pay well, and are in the tech industry that has, it's one of our competitive advantages. We have a lot of software companies and so forth.
And that's my point. That's why I made this motion in December. I believe that the use, the purpose for an urban renewal district and for tax increment financing is to raise the property values of those businesses within the district. And I think you could, you could talk yourself blue in the face trying to say that there's any part of this that wouldn't increase the value of those properties, but you'd be wrong, because it absolutely does increase the value of the properties associated with that district. The value that we bring to using urban renewal on this, to our, to those properties and to our community in terms of the tax revenues generated as a result, can't really be argued from my perspective. And I would say that there is, even as a capital program, of value in that it increases those property values. That's the long-term payoff. We don't get the operational fees, as Ann mentioned, but we do get the fairly massively increased value of the properties in our downtown core. And that's the critical piece, because it helps our community both, in all the ways Danny mentioned, with regard to the jobs that are available there, and people making a decent living, but also increasing the value and making it more likely people will live there, and it will grow taller.
And the service area is, downtown urban renewal district covers 50% of the planned service area, so that, those benefits would definitely extend beyond the urban renewal district.
Hey, George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, this was good. We got some, we have some synthesis of all the potential funding sources that we've seen, you know, been provided for several other meetings. And there was no, so far, we had not seen, well, how can we, how can we take those various things that are doable and put them in different scenarios? And I had Chris Block re-give everybody a copy of my one possible scenario that I shared, you know, last, last time we talked about this. So, and it was nice to fill in some of the unknowns. Appreciate that a lot. $200,000 from Riverfront Urban Renewal District. I was wondering, I think I estimated a little lower than that, but that's good. $200,000 from the property owners. It's nice to get a handle on that, like what they might be expected to contribute for this huge benefit that their properties are going to get. And $600,000 telecom, these are unrestricted funds from telecom, is that my understanding?
Yes, we could use them for telecom-related projects, which this would qualify.
Which this certainly would qualify. Yeah, so that's, that's a million dollars right there. And you've applied, you've started the grant writing, but you have not actually applied yet?
We're in the process of working on those grants. We have to coordinate with EWEB on that.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's going to be $10 million, assuming they're successful. If they're not successful, I would ask people to look at this again, and just, the scenario is the same. I mean, it depends on how much we get from grants, or whether we get any grants at all. We may not get any of them. But hopefully, we would, you said there was a very good possibility of at least getting the state grant. But, you know, even if we don't, if we let the downtown urban renewal district terminate, that's a million a year to the general fund. So what did I figure here? I figured you could take $500,000 of that, starting next year, at, do a full faith and credit bond, for maybe $2 million or a million, depending on how the grant things go. You could, you could generate, to pay that bond, full faith and credit bond off, we could take $500,000 a year from the money coming in from the downtown urban renewal district. That's $2.5 million in five years to pay off the bond. So there's the financing right there. And we let the urban renewal district sunset, like it's supposed to. The interest, you know, I don't think I have that on here, but what about Silt Funds? Are Silt Funds of there, are they all restricted now? Did we, I can't remember what we did in the last budget cycle.
So Silt Funds are a general fund revenue, so they're not restricted.
I see.
But we've essentially programmed them for our current services, so--
Right, okay. All right, so that might not be a prudent way to pay the interest. But anyway, I mean, you know, this, this tells me that we don't need to keep the downtown urban renewal district going for this project.
Thank you, George. Next up is Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the added clarity and the creative thinking about the funding sources. This is a great project. It clearly makes us very competitive in our burgeoning, high-tech industry downtown. And although it'd be a clear subsidy to, in the name of creating good family-wage jobs in our city, so probably a very good investment from a city standpoint that we wouldn't otherwise get from Comcast, or Google, or somebody else. The issue to me is how you pay for it, and that's what we've been discussing for a while. So if we have the downtown urban renewal district help pay for it, $2.5 million of that funds goes to fill, pay for part of this. If the downtown urban renewal district were to sunset, then $3 million needs to come from the general fund. And if it sunsets, then we get $1 million annually that goes into the general fund that would have gone into the downtown urban renewal district. Is there also a balance that gets transferred when it sunsets that goes right to the general fund on top of the annual amount?
Right, so we have to, we have to remit any tax increment dollars that are left after all of the urban renewal commitments are covered. We have to remit that back to the overlapping taxing districts.
And how much would the city general fund get?
We would, I'm trying to remember. I think it's about a quarter of that, whatever that amount is, and we won't know what that amount is until we get there.
Ballpark, right now? Half a million dollars, a million?
I couldn't tell you.
Could we find that number out, what that number is? Is that easy to do? No, it's not easy to do, but can you do it?
Well, it would be, it would be an estimate on things that haven't yet happened, so it's hard to--
Well, just take a snapshot of where we are today.
Where we are today, we don't have enough money to pay off all the debt that we have, so, right, so--
Oh, so if the urban renewal district sunsets, then what happens to the debt that--
It doesn't sunset until we have enough money to pay off the existing obligations. And then whatever's left after that, we won't know that until mid-next year, around this time next year, right, after we get in our property taxes next year and have satisfied--
After we get in our property taxes next year and have satisfied all our obligations, then we would know how much is left.
Oh, so it might be zero.
It'll be something, I'm guessing something more than zero, but I couldn't tell you exactly how much it would be.
Okay. So there's really not that much that will transfer over to the city to help fill that gap of $3 million of general fund money. So basically, it would take about three years to pay off the cost just from, if the Urban Renewal District sunset, to pay off the rest of this amount.
Well, we would probably not suggest we use all million dollars for this particular project because there are other costs. So for example, part of what we would assume is that there are other downtown redevelopment types of personnel costs and things that some of this money would go towards to pay for. So there would be some, and over time, that money could be used to pay this off, but it may not be in the three years. It may be five years or six years or something like that, but the money would be available to do it.
On a purely incremental basis, if you used all that money and didn't do anything downtown, it'd be three years. You could do the short-term bridge gap financing and pay that debt.
But you could use it over time to fill that gap if you chose to.
Right. And so, well, that makes this a very doable thing without the Urban Renewal District. What about E-Web's involvement and funding help in this project? They've been interested in kind of moving around in the fiber business for a while.
And so working with E-Web, they don't have any budget, have no expectation of actually funding this. This is, it's not a revenue generator for them. It's a downtown network. There's not really an expectation that it will increase electrical load. There's a small chance maybe a data center would locate here and they might be a big energy consumer, but it's not going to be one of their big, big, big energy consumers that they would really want to increase their load. They're doing this because they have the legal authority to be a municipal network. There was a vote, the voters have given them that authority, and the technology that we're using with their electrical conduit has proved to work very well. And so they're essentially, we are, we have to be partners where there's not really any expectation that E-Web would have any funds to contribute.
So would it be that we would own the fiber and they would, we'd use their conduit, or would they just own the whole thing?
Well, we're still working through a lot of those details because it's been surprisingly complex. But at this point, it's E-Web will own it.
Right. So basically, with the, without the Urban Renewal District, the general fund subsidy could pay for this fiber system in a relatively short period of time, whether it be three to five years.
And that was part of my comments earlier is that is a path. It doesn't consider the package of other things that you would want to do downtown. It would leave that still a little bit unanswered. So I think that's, you put your finger on the, kind of the dilemma we're in right now is this is a path, it works, but I think the direction is let's look at how we could fund some parts or pieces of all of these improvement projects, and how we do that is a little bit more complicated, a little bit more difficult. If you just look at this in isolation, yes, this works. This general fund project approach works. It doesn't get you the other.
Right. Can you clarify for me, other than the loan fund, which loan fund which can continue on, what are the things that you are suggesting that we might be doing downtown that would not happen if we use this money for the high fiber in the short term? That we would have to defer until after that got paid for?
Well, I think the other, well, the other three projects council has given us direction to pursue are Park Blocks and Open Space, Farmers Market, and the old LCC Building. Those are what, and we'll come back and talk about each one of those individually as well with the same approach of what are the funding possibilities and go through a similar exercise.
And on the Farmers Market, the $500,000 can still move, be allocated for that.
Yes.
Regardless of whether that sunsetted or not. Right, okay. Thanks.
Claire, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, not today, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Second round.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to understand this in context. I want to connect a few dots here because I have to tell you, I'm surprised at what I'm hearing. Out of general fund dollars or finding them in, finding money in other ways, we can do the following things. Six to seven million extra dollars for City Hall, $3 to $4 million to pay for the increase in PERS that we're going to see in the next year, and now the $3 million to pay for this too? We can do all of that with general fund money that we haven't identified in specifics? I think the, I think the, we don't have enough general fund money to do everything, for sure. And so. But the question I think is, is that if there's a million dollar, if the Urban Renewal tax increment financing goes away, there's approximately a million dollars per year that flows into the general fund. The question is, what do you do with that? One option, you could choose to use a portion of that to fund this particular project if we, if you wanted. Hold on. I don't want to get too far down this road. It's not the question I'm asking. What I'm suggesting is how we're talking about this. And by the way, what we're not saying, every time we say you could sunset this and we'd get an extra million dollars, the school district loses $400,000.
Right.
Every time you say that. I think those two have to be paired. I think every time anybody says out loud, "We're willing to take the extra million dollars as a city, but we're willing to stick it to the school district and make them pay an extra $400,000." Those are two hooked in. They will not happen separately. They'll happen together. Number two, I'm talking about when we say we could spend $3 million of general fund money, we're not talking about the caveats at the same time, what the other cost is, and that is that it has a cost of how we deal differently then with City Hall and how we deal differently with the increase in PERS costs that we're going to see in the budgeting for the next couple of cycles. So what I'm saying is, I would, I'm a little concerned with the contextual parts of this conversation that separate all of these responsibilities as if considering them in isolation has no consequence. And we're not suggesting we consider them in isolation. I think that's partly what Denny has talked about. You've asked us to come back with four distinct packages, all of which have different financing options. I think one of George Brown's question is, is can you fund it this way? And I would say, yes, you can. George's option scenario is a scenario that can be funded and moved forward. I apologize if my voice raised while I was looking at you. Because I'm not angry with you or staff about that at all. Not at all. And so, so we also think it has to be made in the context of the whole picture. And so as we move forward with all of these work sessions around the downtown and the Urban Renewal District, and how do we fund them, and eventually the budget all comes together, all of that does, there is a context for all of that. So we're just one narrow piece. We're trying to answer some questions that specifically have been brought up that can this scenario work? Yes, you can make this scenario work. Legally, it's doable, but we may or may not have the money. May or may not choose that for any numbers of reasons, one way or another, so. I see. All right. Well, I don't know how we do it aside from the Budget Committee and the budget discussions, but a broader context to some of the things that we're talking about lately, I think, is important. It's why, from my perspective, I brought this up originally as what I thought was the wisest course, using urban renewal, because of some of those other things. And I have to say, I don't know how to make sure that all of these conversations at the table have that manner of context to them. Thank you.
So I would say that you will make sure they are. And I would also say that Denny started out his conversation today trying to lay out those kinds of choices that are before you, and the manager has just gone through saying, "You could choose this. There's consequences to whatever choice you make. If you choose to not use urban renewal, then there's consequences to that. If you choose to use urban renewal, there's consequences to that." And that is just the on, I think we will be having that conversation over and over again. I guess for me, what I would like to say is that I think when we get in these conversations about fiber and others, sometimes people misconstrue those as something that we're doing as a, essentially as a favor to the business community as opposed to something that we hope will even the playing field for everybody in this city, and that's why you keep talking about it as a basic infrastructure need in our community. And then I think in terms of the economy, and I can say this often enough, we know that 45% of our folks in this area live in poverty, and we're really trying, as we're trying to provide services on one hand, we're trying to change the economy so that so many people don't need those services. So this is a two-prong, from my point of view, more than anything else, is evening the playing field for everybody and giving people who are poor opportunities that other people could pay for. And it's also trying to take the responsibility for putting, getting people out of poverty so that we don't have to provide the amount of services that we currently have to provide because they are. So it is a, it is a big discussion. There is nothing in our community that we are working on and talking about that doesn't tie back to the well-being of our families in this area. And that is what this council spends all their time in all these conversations trying to do, to assure fairness, justice, opportunity for everybody in our community. And it takes all of these things to make that, to make that happen. So George Brown, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to go back to the grant writing thing just for a second. When would you imagine that you would have those grants submitted?
I, we haven't actually identified a date. We're working, both, both the state and the federal grants have a two-step process. At the state level, they call it an intake form. And so you have to fill out an intake form, and then they review it, and then they invite you to submit the full form. And that intake form, we expect to have the first draft done by the end of this week, and then refining it from there. It depends on staff capacity. And then the federal form, we're going to work with ALCOG, who has grant writers on staff to help work on that grant. And we haven't worked out the, but it has a similar process where you have to do this preliminary application to see if you get over a hurdle.
Yeah, that's normal. I'm familiar with that process. Yeah, and they've got great grant writers at ALCOG, so they're going to put forward a good proposal, I'm sure. Then, I know that you probably, I mean, you can't predict exactly, but when would you know the success or failure of those grant proposals? A year from now?
The state, the state has been very, I worked on a different application for a different, a different issue with the state program, and they were very, very responsive.
Very quick.
They were very quick. I mean, I think within a couple of weeks, I had response on the intake form and feedback on how to improve it.
Oh, great.
The federal one, I don't have any experience with. It's a, the grant, the funding opportunity is, it's available this year. It's not an, you know, rolling grant that has existed for a long time, and so there's, we don't have any experience with that particular grant. But I do, and I do know, I have another grant application into the EPA, and we submitted that grant in early December, and we haven't heard yet. So it really varies, grant and by agency and by grant.
And department, probably, too, the agency, yeah. Okay, thanks for that. Well, I'd just like to make a comment. You had mentioned earlier, you know, that Google Fiber is installing fiber, and you listed some of the cities, and that they're all so much bigger than us. Actually, you know, Provo's 117,000 people, smaller than Eugene. And Kansas City, there's actually two cities there. There's KCMO and KCK. And Kansas City, Kansas is smaller than Eugene. They're about the, roughly the same size. Kansas City, Missouri is much bigger, but they are two separate jurisdictions. And so, you know, they've had to work out arrangements with two, for purposes of, you know, getting the thing done, they're working with two different jurisdictions. And so, you know, there's a couple of cities that are about our size or smaller. And I had a brief conversation with Mary Beth Henry this morning in Portland. It's their Office of Community Technology, and they should have their thing wrapped, their contract wrapped up with Google by the start of this summer, was her best guess. So it did take a while, though. I mean, they started it, what, three or four years ago, something like that. So it took a while. They had to wait till the legislature exempted them from this tax to make it go forward. But that's done, and it's been going a little faster. And finally, I'd just like to kind of comment on this stuff about, you know, 4J being prejudiced. If we, you know, terminate the Downtown Urban Renewal District, that's a red herring. The thing that's hurting the school districts, look, Portland has 11 Urban Renewal Districts active. They've had as many as 14. They've terminated three of them. We've had two. Anyone ever heard of the State Street Urban Renewal District or the East University Urban Renewal District? They were in Eugene back in the day. They've both been terminated. So we have, you know, we can, but it's the Portland Urban Renewal Districts that are withholding millions and millions and millions of dollars every year from every school child in Oregon. Ours is peanuts compared to that.
Alan?
Yeah, and true to be told, the sunset was what the plan was, and if the 4J was on notice since 2010, that this was coming. Until this discussion started, they should have been planning for this. So to finish off where I was before, the $3 million of general fund is only if we don't get any grants. So if we get the 1.25 federal and half a million dollar state, that's 1.75, or about 60% of the, so that only leaves 1.25 million left to finance, which could change that five-year timeframe to one to two years. So without Urban Renewal District. So we should get some grants.
Right. Okay, I think we are, nothing more discussion today, so.
We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.